It is seven o'clock. We will now start our regularly scheduled town council meeting. Kathy, could you lead us in pledge of allegiance, please?
Oh, I pledge allegiance to the law.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to item C, presentations and recognitions. We have none. Public hearings, none. New items, none. Moving right along. Public comment, item F. Public comment is the time where we allow people to come to the front and speak their piece. We would like it if you would give us your name and address. We will start with those here with us in person, and please try and limit your comments to five minutes.
Good evening. Tim Kelly, 62 Westview. I want to start with a correction or addition to the June 13th council meetings. I made a key point there, which was this. If we think we need more affordable housing for refugees, immigrants, seniors, and other low-income people, then we should look at remissioning the 1928 building for that purpose, utilizing the 16 million already allocated, instead of building out expanded office suites for town staff. I think using our American Rescue, ARPA funds this way might actually feel like we're rescuing somebody with that approach. I do want to go back to the core issue that came up at New Horizons. They are now, as you know, changing the fundamental mission and use of that facility. For 40 years, New Horizons was specially designed, built, and funded for the wheelchair-disabled. We recently invested millions of taxpayer dollars to expand and improve this unique facility. The New Horizon Apartments are now, however, being offered to potentially anyone as affordable housing. The new use of this property expansion was never fully disclosed in earlier meetings and zoning hearings. I believe this property change should go through the zoning process. In Farmington, you can't change the color of your porch without going through at least two boards. Now, when I was at the June 13th New Horizons resident meeting where some of these changes were announced, a veteran raised his hand and made a point. He said, "Why would you give a unique wheelchair-enabled room to somebody who is not physically disabled? What about our veterans who definitely need a specialized living facility and could, you know, truly benefit from this?" So, tough to argue. Anyway, instead of self-optimizing our available property portfolio in Farmington, let's not have a zero-sum outcome where we rob Peter to pay Paul. I think we need to get a proactive plan to get out in front of this. We need to sort of size the potential challenge coming. As I understand it, the U.S. signed up for 500,000 refugees, which would work out to 10,000 people per state. So assuming Connecticut gets the average amount, if you divide that up by 169 municipalities, you get to, you know, 60 new people looking for housing in Farmington. Now, somebody at the state may already be creating a formula for this because that's what they tend to do, give us formulas. But my question would be, what is our town plan if a bus pulls up on Monteith Drive with 54 refugees? Now, by coincidence, the 1928 building could be a solution. Our social service department is on campus. Continuing education is also here at the high school with English language, citizenship, GED, and computer skills classes offered every night. We have educational resources for children based at the BOE Office, Board of Ed. The library is here on campus with children's programs, computers for adult use. Route 4 is the best bus service in town if you need to get somewhere, perhaps a job. Here at the town hall, you can get everything from dog tags to marriage licenses. And then, we also, of course, here have fields and gyms on site. So, just to close, I think we need to have a town strategy and cohesive process, which really bubbled up out of some of the changes going on at New Horizons. It's evident that multiple government agencies are involved at different levels. You do have some corporations with financial incentives. There are out-of-town nonprofit organizations involved, and then you have local church groups and miscellaneous others. So I appreciate you folks taking that under consideration and thinking about where we take the town going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from those here in person?
Anne Newberry, 23, Hatters Lane. I would just like to sort of speak to N5, although you're not there yet, talking about the Parsons property. And I would like to say that that would be such a great location for a visitor center that would promote the cultural events and tie right in with the cultural district, which I believe will be on the agenda also earlier tonight, for Farmington and Unionville. And it seems too bad, after all the charrettes and everything we did eight years ago, not to be able to move forward with the state and really make some of that happen for not only the Farmington Historical Society, but for the town as a whole.
Thank you. Any other public comment from those here in the audience? Hearing none, we'll go to those online. Do we have anyone online who would like to make public comments?
We do have a few hands raised. First, we have Portia Corbett.
Great, thank you. Portia, you're on.
Okay, hi. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you just fine, thank you.
Okay, great. First, hi. Happy summer. I wanted to, of course, address and make a couple of comments for the record on the proposed lease with the state that we're doing. I had a meeting on June 14th with Kathy and Joe Capitafaro and Russ Arnold about what was happening with the state and how you were looking towards leasing the property instead of buying it. And it all sounded good. You know, there would be an ingress and egress for the Historical Society, which now would have to put the Phineas Lewis House totally on our property. And the ingress and egress would be through our 100-foot setback, basically, or somewhere where there would be parking and provided for this building that would be a visitor center and the Historical Society. I'm looking at this document, and I don't see any reference to the Historical Society at all. That may be something that you just can't do right now. I'm just telling you what I see. And I don't see any drive to a building that would be on our property. I don't see any parking that is planned there. I do see on the map that the 100-foot setback is mentioned, but it's not delineated, so you don't actually see how far 100 feet goes, which is pretty far, including the drive that is on that map, the top half of that drive. Also, there are two right-of-ways that are referenced, and both of them have the Gaston Bead's names on them, and they haven't owned one Mountain Spring Road for 15 years. We own it. So that needs to be brushed up because we're the ones that hold the 50-foot right-of-way. So, all of these things, and tell me if these things are all going to be negotiated. This is a lot of negotiating that I don't see on this lease at all, and the main thing being the lease term, which is starting here at five years, and then two five-year renewals. That's 15 years. Now, I'd like to say, if you were the Farmington Historical Society, and you don't see any reference to you at all on all of this, and you were going to, with your agreement or your intentions with the town, undoing a visitor's center in our building, putting the Phineas Lewis House, the historical house, back, if you were going to spend a million, two million and a half dollars easy on that particular project, would you be satisfied with 15 years? And if you weren't going to be satisfied with 15 years, which of course, if that was taken away, we would be landlocked because you know we're not going out Mountain Spring Road. That's not happening. So, if you weren't going to go for 15 years, what are you going to go to? What are you going to be settled at? Are you going to be settled at 50 years? If they say 50 years, okay, fine. Are you going to be settled at 100 years? If the 100 years, they say, fine. I would like to know what your intentions are because negotiating is fine, but the state, people at the state change, as we all know very well, and people at the town change. And we've been doing this, we've been looking at this plan, like Anne said, the charrette started in 2015. It was the following year, 2016, when I went to Bill Warner, and Rose will remember this, and we went towards the plan. So, there are so many ifs on this plan. Jack Kemper, I believe, is also on the call, and he can explain what we had planned, which you already knew. I mean, we've been talking about this, like I said, for years. So, I'd like to know where we're going with this. Who approves this lease? Is it the town council that finally approves it after Kathy negotiates with them? And what the terms are that you think would be acceptable if you were in our position and in your position, knowing that you could have a visitor's center, the Historical Society, and now adding in your cultural district, all that all wrapped up together, what would you expect? And what would you think is fair?
Great, thank you.
So, that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Kathy?
At this time, I don't see any other hands.
If you are out there and you are looking to speak, please raise your hand, and we will call upon you. Anyone who is wishing to speak from the public out online. We will do an unusual move. We will move back to those in public, so please come back up to the podium. Our in-person.
I'm kneeling.
We all take a little extra time today.
Yeah.
Certainly.
First of all, Joanne Lawson, 9 Prattling Pond Road in Farmington. I missed the meeting about the economic development plan for tourism, and I just wanted to say, I think in general, that's going to be a great idea, especially for Hillstead, which is bigger and could use a lot more advertising help from the state. So I think yay, let's do it. But I have a question about the Parsons lot. In the summary online, it said, "During the January 10th, 2023 meeting, the state shared new information about the Parsons parcel and informed the town that conveying the parcel may not be possible." So I wonder what that information was to stop conveying the property? And I, like, you know, is it terribly contaminated or something? I would like to know that.
We'll get into all that in N5. We'll be talking about all of that. Thank you. That was quick. Appreciate that. In the meantime, has anyone else raised their hands online?
No.
Okay. Seeing no hands online being raised, we will be moving on to reading of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the reading of the minutes of June 13th, 2023, regular town council meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the reading of the minutes for June 15th, 2023, special town council meeting.
Second. A motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Moving on to item H, reading of communications and written appeals. Do we have any? None. Okay. Item I, reports of committees, 1928 building committee.
Nothing to report.
I too, Farmington High School Building Committee.
So, the Farmington High School Building Committee continues to get updates from our partners. All I could say at this point is we're on schedule, and we're on time, and we're on budget. And the next meeting is Wednesday, September 19th.
Appreciate you adding that on-budget part. Okay, great. Moving on to item three, green efforts.
Nothing to report, other than their next meeting is August 1st at 7:00 via Zoom.
Great. And I'll just add, anyone who's collecting cans, please feel free to go down by the river because there always seem to be some right on the side of the river if you want a nickel each. Next, land acquisition committee.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Racial Equality Task Force.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Moving right along to item J, reports of the council chair and liaisons. We will start with the council chair. It is amazing, the things you see floating down the river and sitting on the side of the river, things that should not be on the side of the river. I'm not quite sure why someone goes to the trouble to clean up after their dog if they're going to leave a bag full of what they cleaned up on the side of the river. Diapers, the box that your floaty came in, you can bring those back out with you. So please, if you see them there, I always bring a bag with me, fill it up, bring it back out. There are trashcans all around outside. The newsletter, I hope you all got a chance to look at the summer newsletter, a lot of great information in there. Amongst that, I think we talk about our bicycle riders. Please, it is the state law, give them three feet to pass. We also had, this past week, the carnival. Tunks is Ho's had three great nights, family night, fireworks night, and the all-important parade night, of which a number of us were there judging the bands. Great attendance throughout. It was a fun night, and I think it is the first night that we got to sit up there, and it was not 205 degrees. So the overcast was greatly appreciated. The Big Bird Bridge, I'm just going to mention this, and would love to hear input from people. Everyone knows the Big Bird Bridge in the middle of town, which is rusty, spray-painted, does not look great, does not present well in town. I would love to see us repaint that. I know there are very strong emotions and passions regarding the Big Bird Bridge. I'd love to see it painted and have us repaint, not in spray paint, but a little nicer. We can paint Big Bird right on the side of it and keep that there in all perpetuity. I think it was in the 80s when that first showed up, but let's make it a little cleaner. Can paint it maroon and gray, the high school colors. On the other side, we could paint class of and paint the numbers up there so they look nice. So just throwing it out there, I'm sure we're going to get lots of responses for that one. So, just something to think about. And, yeah, I think that is most of what we've got. Oh, there was a triathlon up in Litchfield Hills this weekend. I mentioned because there were eight participants from Farmington and Unionville. Of those, six placed in the top three. So congratulations to all those people who did a great job out there in the heat of Saturday. And I will do a self-serving plug. There is a swim across the sound at the end of July that I am joining the Hartford Hospital's ST Elevations team. If you would like to support a great cause, go on their website and donate to the team, trying to raise money to swim the 15 miles across the sound as a relay team. And that is all I have for the chair report. Moving on to conservation and inland wetlands.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Board of Education.
Also nothing to report.
Okay. I'm glad I filled up all our time. Bicycle and Trails Advisory, still working on the trails, looking at some more safe routes throughout town. We've got our Porter Potties out there, which has been a welcome to anyone who is traversing the trails, and that's all we have going on at the moment. Economic Development Commission.
That's it.
He is not here today, so thank you. Nothing to report. Historic District Commission in Farmington.
Thank you. I have something to report.
Excellent.
Thank you. I will make it quick. We have a number of things that were approved in town in the historic district. It was approved, a certificate of appropriateness to install fencing at 4 Porter Road as presented. It was also voted to approve an application for a certificate of temporary appropriateness to install a shed and expand a patio at 144 Main Street. It was also voted to approve a certificate of appropriateness for replacement windows at 24 Main Street. And I mentioned these things, and also as a reminder that property owners within the historic district, that if they are considering updating or changing exterior site features, to reach out to the staff to determine if a certificate of appropriateness is required. And that helps keep our town beautiful, much like picking up trash along the river.
Very good.
And because of these people in the historic district, we have a beautiful historic district. Our next meeting will be next Tuesday, right here, July 18th at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you, Brian. Housing Authority.
We continue to have fair housing meetings, or hearings, I should say, details I won't get into. Our next meeting is on July 19th at 6:30.
Great, thanks. Library Board.
Nothing to report.
Town Plan and Zoning Liaison.
The most noteworthy thing from TPZ in their last meeting was that the extension of the moratorium on new multifamily residential developments in all zones, and that's now extended through October 1st. Their next, and they continue to have working sessions on affordable housing as well. Their next meeting is Monday, July 17th, next Monday.
Thank you. Unionville Historic District Commission, no thing to report today. Unionville Village Improvement Association, nothing to report today. WPCA.
Nothing to report.
Other liaisons, nothing to report. Moving on to the report of the town manager.
You have a written report in front of you. I just noted some cultural events that are taking place. So we had the Lovely Street Historic Home, the Summer at the Museum Program, and Connecticut Historic Garden Day. And also, I just wanted to note that, as Joan had mentioned too, that we do have a tremendous amount of road projects being done in town right now. We're trying to keep our webpage up to date weekly about the changes. Most of them are either with the state of Connecticut. There's CLMP, or ever-source projects. So, give yourself some extra time. People will be inconvenienced. We do have one, the Sanford and Hawley Road shut down, so there is quite a bit of traffic going on. So, just to let everyone know, but keep up with your, on the webpage, and hopefully we can get through them. Oh, okay, yes.
Yes, if you want to mention that.
Sure. On New Horizons, just to let you know, Mr. Kelly asked a couple of questions. One, I just wanted to have one clarification, is that, it's my understanding, but I will double-check, when he mentioned taxpayer dollars, I'm not sure if he meant Farmington's taxpayer dollars with the grant, but that was through the state of Connecticut, which obviously was the state of Connecticut grant, but it wasn't Farmington taxpayer dollars. The other thing is, is that we are getting a legal opinion about New Horizons through the zoning department. So, it is our understanding that they did not have to change any kind of zoning, but we do want to make sure of that, so we are getting a legal opinion on that. So, more to follow.
Great. And that is a private endeavor?
That's a private endeavor.
Okay. So it's not the town's operations, just to make that clear?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions for Kathy regarding the report?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the town manager's report.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Appointments.
I'd like to make a motion, agenda item L4, that Bob Cantor be appointed as an ultimate member of Town Planning and Zoning Commission for the balance of a two-year term beginning immediately and end in January 2nd, 2024.
Second. Great. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Any other appointments? Seeing none. Moving on to item M, old business. I believe we have none.
Nope.
N1.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to authorize the Economic Development Commission to submit an application to establish a Farmington and Unionville Cultural District.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
So you have a long note. We also have Rose Ponte, our Economic Development Director, and Bill Wadsworth, our chairperson of the Economic Development Commission here. But what we are looking to do is to establish cultural districts, and what the benefits are, I think it's good to note, is it gives distinct character of the community, improves the quality of life for residents, attracts and draws new residents and businesses to town, drives economic growth and expands the tax base, promotes tourism and increases visitation to town, and supports local arts and cultural attractions to visitors. So during the February 8th Economic Development, EDC, meeting, Rose reviewed the benefits having cultural district designations and the criteria necessary to establish such a district. The commissioners reached consensus that establishing such a district would be beneficial for the town, and told Rose to investigate the process by which to establish such a district. In order for a municipality to establish a cultural district, the district must be located in Connecticut, have defined borders, must be walkable and accessible, have cultural facilities and assets with public infrastructure and amenities, and must establish a cultural district commission. The EDC commissioners determined that since Union and Farmington have such rich and varied arts and cultural offerings, it would be best to establish both a Unionville Cultural District and a Farmington Cultural District. There are several models, and the EDC chose to create a Cultural District Advisory Council Subcommittee reporting to the EDC. This would be a non-voting advisory council and would act as a cultural district working group. In order to begin the process of establishing a district, a community meeting must be held, and on June 14th, the Economic Development Commission hosted a community meeting here at the town hall, and Amanda Roy from the Greater Hartford Arts Council presented an overview of the process to establish a cultural district. There were 23 community members, which included representatives from various arts and cultural organizations in town. Rose was there, there was some lively discussion, and Rose has also been meeting with the F...
VG.
LA, yeah. And also the Hillstead Museum. She's planning on meeting with the Hillstead Museum. After the community meeting, the EDC reached out to the Economic Development Commissioners, Bill reached out, and they unanimously voted to proceed with the application. So tonight, we're here to present this idea and seek a resolution authorizing the Economic Development Commission to submit an application to the Greater Hartford Council to establish the Unionville and Farmington Cultural District. If you approve this resolution, we will proceed with the process, and these are the next steps. We'll submit a letter of intent, we'll appoint the Cultural District Advisory Subcommittee, and we'll complete the cultural district application, we'll submit a letter of endorsement, and we'll plan the walking tour of the Unionville Cultural District and the Farmington Cultural District. So, Rose and Bill are here, but I think it's a great idea. It's a great initiative for the EDC. It's been after the Business Breakfast that many of you went to, when the person from the arts were there showing the benefits of arts and culture to a community, the economic benefits. And I think we have such a great cultural on both Unionville and in Farmington, and I think this is a great idea, and it seems like it's gathering a lot of support from what the different community members have when they came to the meeting, and I think that's something that we should do.
Great. I will open it to any questions from the council, for Bill or Rose, or in general.
I have a couple of questions. So, I was fortunate to be at the breakfast with Liz Shapiro when she came and talked, and it was, it is a fabulous idea. And when she had spoken, she talked about, I think it was Fairfield that had done it. Did they have one cultural district, or did they have two as well?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, the first district at that time that Liz spoke was Richfield, and Richfield only had one district. So the way the process works, and it's outlined, any town can have more than one district if they think that that's what's best for their town, but you only have to do one application. So when we first discussed it on the Economic Development Commission level, we really thought, wouldn't it be great to have one cultural district with Unionville and Farmington? Like, think of it as a dumbbell, they were thinking. And so, Unionville's one head of the dumbbell, Farmington's the other, and Route 4 would be connecting this dumbbell. But then, as we started talking to the different community members... But then, as we started talking to the different community members, I went to the Unionville Historic District Commission, I also went to the Farmington Historic District Commission, we talked to various people. It really became very clear that, number one, one of the prerequisites, or the standards, is that it has to be walkable. And that real, that district would be so large that you really couldn't walk it in one day. And so, we've been working with Amanda Roy, and we explained the situation. And she thought, you know, you have the ability to have two districts in your town, and that just gives visitors a chance, maybe one time they come to the Unionville Historic, and then the other time they'll come to Farmington. She goes, we're finding that, you know, if your town has all these assets, that might be a great option for you. So then, after discussing it again with the commission, everyone felt that, you know, that might be the best way for us to go.
Okay. And other than Richfield, are there other areas, other cultural districts, like in this neck of the woods?
Yes, in this neck of the woods. Bristol has already been approved, so has Old Weathers Field. Bloom Field is in the process of applying. She has about three others. Again, this is brand-new legislation that was passed in 2019. And so, Richfield was a first in the state, and Torrington was a second in the state. And then now, more and more towns, you know, I think once COVID was behind them, more towns are getting back to the business of doing, you know, innovative initiatives. And so, they're seeing more and more applications coming in.
Okay, and two really quick questions.
Sure.
Just to remind me, in terms of timeline, like, you submit the application, and then is it like, you get vetted in the next year, is it like, three years? Like, what's the process?
No, actually, it could, it could go as quickly as we can move to, because, so, you work through your Regional Arts Council, and ours happens to be the Hartford, the Greater Hartford Arts Council. So Amanda Roy is the lead there, and she would kind of walk us through the process. So the very next step would start having the EDC look at, well, first we have to file the application, and do our, first our letter of intent, then do the application. And part of that application is appointing a commission, like a working group, that advisory committee. So that's going to have to be done. And then, that advisory committee has to set up goals that they're hoping to accomplish by having this cultural district. And then, the hardest part, I think, is planning the walking tours. Because you have to plan it in such a way that you're going to have people from the state Historic, Chippewa and Properties Committee, you're going to have people from DCD, you're going to have folks from the Greater Hartford Arts Council, and you actually walk them through your walking tour. And you have to make sure that, at that point, you have your defined boundaries, and those boundaries have different cultural institutions, and each one of them will have an opportunity to be part of that walking tour. And then we have to also organize one for Unionville. And then, at that time, after those walking tours have been walked by all those different, they'll decide whether it is worthy of being a cultural district. They want to work with every town, so they said, it's not that they're going to deny us, they may, you know, give us some suggestions that we need to implement before they give us a designation. So depending on how quickly this advisory committee starts working, that will really determine the timeline.
Okay, I think it's a great idea, and the idea, I'm not too sure about the, on the Unionville side, but I know I've done that walk numerous times, like the Hillstead-Farmington side, and most of that work has already been done in terms of like, setting the, you know, the walking area with the historical district especially, and having all those sites lined up in a nice little package. So I'm very excited about this.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, we are too.
Yeah. I think long-term residents in Unionville will really appreciate having a separate historical district too, while the towns, you know, there is a separate, unique history to Unionville, and it's a separate sort of vibe than the Center of Farmington too. They're both great, but that's why I think it's going to be nice to have both of them.
Yeah, that's exactly how the members of the Unionville Historic District, they voice that same. And although Unionville's, you know, they might be more compact, they have amazing, they have actually five different historic walking tours that are already, you know, established. And then they, they have quite enough to do their own little districts.
Yeah, and the histories are different too, and how-
Exactly.
You know, and the different things that happened, and so, it's a great idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? And to balance off the two districts, we have the Viberts here on the Unionville side, and the Wadsworths on the Farmington side with us tonight. So, this is hundreds of years of history within this town, just with these two people's families.
Very happy to represent the Unionville side, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Thanks, Rose.
Thank you.
Hearing none. We have a motion and seconds. Is there no further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda Item N3. I'd like to make a motion to award a contract to Black &amp; Boucher LLC Watertown, Connecticut, to mill various town roads for a 2023 paving season at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Second.
We have a motion second, Kathy.
The purpose of this motion is to contract with the vendor to mill sweep and haul away groundings from town roads during the town's 2023 street paving season.
And if we don't do this, we just leave piles along the side of the road?
Yes.
Any questions or comments?
For people to pick up with their cams.
There you go. Okay, if there are other questions, we have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda Item N3. Make a motion to award a contract for the purchase of treated road salt for the 2023-24 winter season to Cargill, Inc. of North Olmsted, Ohio, at the purchase price of 96.12 per ton.
Second.
We have a motion and second, Kathy.
This will be to contract with the vendor to supply treated road salt, which will be used by the Highway and Grounds Division on snow and ice-covered roads and sidewalks during the upcoming winter season. It's estimated the town will use 1,500 tons during this winter season, bringing the value of the award to $144,180.
Great. We have a motion and second. Any questions or comments?
What happens if we don't use the salt?
Store it in the salt shed.
We store it.
Okay, I was curious, just if we don't, there's no snow.
We spice our foods a little.
Hey.
You said that.
Himalayan.
Right, your tone.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda Item N4. Make a motion to award a contract to Tilcon, Connecticut, Inc., to supply in-place binumis material on town roads for the 2023 paving season at a cost not to exceed $1,400,000.
Second.
A motion and second, Kathy.
And this is for our Tilcon to pave our roads for the 2023 street paving program, and it's $1.4 million.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion passing unanimously. Now on to the all-popular N5.
N5. Make a motion to authorize a Town Manager to sign an agreement between the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation and the Town of Farmington to lease the premises of the northerly side of Connecticut Route 4, Farmington Avenue, known as the Parsons Property, containing approximately 2.44 acres.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Kathy?
Okay, so I thought maybe we could start, people are pretty familiar with most of the background here, so just start with, that if you remember, that we were told that, not relatively recently, that we were going to be able to have the purchase, that was going to be given to us for a thousand dollars.
Not just told, it was in writing.
It was in writing. So, we were told that we were going to get the property. Then we were told after that that was an error on the state's part, and that they were not allowed to do that. So then, the next thing was, as you remember, we've gone back a couple of times, and they were going to convey it through a legislative process. So, after we were told that we weren't going to get the property for the $1,000, we were working with the state legislation legislators, and also with the DOT about conveying the property. Which brings me to the January 10th, 2023, meeting that we had. And at that time, the state informed us that we really were not allowed, we weren't going to be able to convey that, they were not going to be able to convey the property to us at a low amount of money. Is that because that property was used through federal funds, that the state or someone had to pay back that money to the federal government. So even though, over the years, we were going to convey the property, we were now told that conveying the property was really not an appropriate action of the state, and that if they did convey it to us, we would, someone would owe the federal government the market value of the property, which is, I think-
They claim $2 million.
$2 million. So, yes, I guess we could get it conveyed, but we'd have to pay $2 million. And then, why would we convey it when we just would just buy it from the state of Connecticut? So, that we learned in January of 2023. Then, we had a meeting with the state, because obviously we were upset that it looked like we were not going to get the Parsons property. And the state came back and said, potentially, we could lease the property from the state of Connecticut. So we talked to the state, and we said, listen, if you want to see what this process is, and you do the diligence, due diligence on it, we'd be willing to consider this. So the state, from January up to now, talked to whoever they talked to, and came up with a lease document for us. And basically, it's a lease that we would have, still have what we called the modified open space, and on the lease, it does say we could have our parking, we could have our benches, we can have a fountain, we can have sidewalks, we can have different things to it. All of that's in the lease. But the terms of the lease are, were for five years, and then renewable for the next two years, so really a 15-year lease, which is not perfect by any stretch of the imagination. But, when I talked to the state, they said potentially we could do it for maybe a 10-year, but they'd have to go back, and it's going to go through another process, and things of that nature. This, to me, is the only option from the town. I mean, I would suggest, if the Historic District or wants to talk to the state, our state legislative people, and try to get assurances from the state. We got assurances that the state doesn't go back on things, but again, our risk level is a lot less than the Historic District's risk level. After 15 years, we're talking about some sidewalks and a parking lot. Again, I can feel for the Historic District, putting a house on a property that only has a 15-year lease. I have in the motion here that I'd like to continue to negotiate with them about this, but they really are hot and heavy to keep on now moving this process along. I'm nervous about not keeping it moving along, if we have any interest in this, or it's going to just go away. You know, the person that is interested in helping us because of all the problems we had, I, you know, people retire, people leave, I don't, you know, I don't know that, I just feel like what we've gone through, this is, I think it's either that we decide not to do this, and the property, they'll continue to try to market it, or we have this, and it's our modified open space, and we, you know, continue to do this. But the lease is, does say that we can, they can basically not renew our lease, you know? So, there is some, there is some problems with it, but I don't think, you know, I think the risk is worth it on our end, that maybe not for the Historic District, but I don't know what the other options would be, because we're not conveying it, and unless you all tell me we're planning on buying it, the other option is the state, it's going to stay as it is until the state finds someone to buy it from them. So, this is basically where we're at.
I mean, there's no rule in a lease where, once you sign it, you can't. So, could we take action on this, with the caveat that we're going to continue to try to build in extensions to it?
Yeah, that's, yeah. And, but when I talked to him, I, you know, I said, well, you know, do we want, can we do a 50-year lease? We have a lease with the state, that's a long, long-term lease. He did not think that was good. He said maybe 10 years, but he'd, again, he's pushing this up another organization, wherever they're doing it, and honestly, the less we kind of push back on some of this stuff, I think the better off we are, to our town perspective, for, you know, for this. But, again, it's, you know, up to the, you know, what the council.
This has definitely been an imperfect process, and I got to say, and I'll say this, choose my words wisely, very disappointed in our delegation for not doing more to help the Town of Farmington get this piece of property. $2 million is absolutely ridiculous for 2.4 acres. We do hold the upper hand, because we still have a planning and zoning process, so if anybody was to buy it and come through, they would have to go through that process. And maybe there are some things to look into with that. Obviously, I'm not going to say no to you to continue to negotiate, because you know all the details, and that's just it, we're going to negotiate. But I, again, I'm just, I sit here for my term and previous terms, that we've been told numerous things all along the way. We've done everything that we were supposed to do as a town, and we've been completely let down.
But is that the state delegation's fault? Weren't they part of the last round of negotiations, or the last round of meetings? I thought that they were, no?
This last one, they were there when we were told that we couldn't convey it.
Okay. So, a couple of things. Does the DOT, or the, I guess, Greater Hartford Arts Council have any pull with the folks that manage the property?
DOT owns the property.
So, does the Greater Hartford Arts Council have any, like, do they work at all with the-
I'm sure they work, they could work with them, but the DOT has complete control over this property.
Right, but initially, when we went to them, we didn't even think about the, like, having an arts district or two in the culture?
Yes, we did, yeah.
The initial meetings?
The original proposal was to rebuild the Phineas Lewis House on that property. In every conversation from that early 2020, at which point they said, we will convey this property to you, not may, we will convey this property to you for $1,000. And we said, well, this is what we want. We want to rebuild a historic house on the site as a welcome center, we want to have a welcome sign, we want to have a park here. They said, absolutely, those all fit the description. Then they changed their mind.
And then, but what we did do, and when we talked to them, and again, again, with the Historic Society, I would assume that they would not want to put a house on a property that was a leased property, regardless, even if it was a long-term lease. So when we met with them, we said, is it still okay that they use it as an access? So we can put a parking lot, and we can put a sidewalk, so it can lead to their property? And they were willing to do that. And again, I have gotten assurances, again, but what, how valuable those assurances are, that once we have sidewalks and a parking lot and a historic house next door, it's very unlikely, they've told us, that the state is all of a sudden going to say, we're not going to lease you this property anymore. But, again, our risk level, as on the town side, is a lot less than putting up a house, and then the state coming and saying, you know, it's a leased piece of property, and it's, we don't own it. So, it's a difficult situation.
But now that we have the application pending, right, actually, like a physical application, is there anything else that we could go back to them and say, hey, by the way, our application is going to be submitted on, you know?
For the cultural district, but they, that doesn't, again, I think there would be, in general, political pressure later on, if there was a house, and we had all this going on, and the state all of a sudden came in and said, oh, we're going to take away this property, and we have the cultural district? That's why the DOT person said to me, the likelihood of all that happening, in his opinion, is slim to none. But, again, we don't have a great track record of what they've said and what they've done, and that's why I would suggest that, that the state, the Historical Society group, meet with our legislative people and the DOT, and not go through a third person, and they can decide what their risk level is on this. And, you know, like I said, I've gotten a lot of assurances about it, but, again, this lease basically says they can say in 30 days they want us off the property.
That was my one thing, though, from the lease too, that I read.
Yeah.
It seems, it's either side with 30-day notice means you have a five-year lease, but you essentially have a 30-day lease.
Right.
So, I, which I, and I, but all that being said, I completely agree with everything you said. I don't know what our other option is at this point. I do think at some point, bird in hand, you know, the old saying, to, it may be easier to try to push back when we have something signed too, to try to build what we have signed. There's no rule that once it's signed, we can't keep on adding to it. I do feel for the Historic District. I know that this has been like pulling teeth for them, and, you know, since I've been on council for two years, it's been something, every couple of months comes up, and it just seems like we make a little progress, then two steps back.
Right. I think, to the state's credit, I think that the gentleman that's running the, this part of the organization now, feels that this town has been put through the wringer on some of this stuff, and especially the last thing where the error was made, that we were told that we were going to convey, they were going to, not convey, give the[1746.52] that we were told that we were going to convey, they were going to, not convey, give the property to us. And he's really worked hard, but to do this with the lease document and go to these different groups and get this lease document for us and, but I don't think that we're really, it's, this is, he can make some changes, but I don't know how far he can go. But I do know that, I did say something about maybe 10 years, I mean, I asked for longer. And he was like, I'll see what I can do. And that's why I put in the motion to negotiate further. But I do, if you guys approve this, I want to be clear that if we don't negotiate further, it would be what's here, it would be a 15-year, you know, there's not, unless you tell me to come back and say, you know?
In that first meeting on January 10th, I believe you were asking for a 99-year lease, a long-term lease. And that was the initial discussion because that seemed to make sense for what we're trying to do, the historic district or the historic society is trying to do. And unfortunately, again, the, the current leadership at DOT has been trying to be very helpful throughout this process recently. This is not the same people that made the promises, wrote the letters, told us five different things that we should do, all of which we did immediately when they told us to, and then changed their mind. At one point, we were told, and this was confirmed by all of our legislators in the state, all we need is the signature of the governor. That's it, that's coming any day now. That day never came. And the next thing we heard was, we've got to talk to you, we've got a problem. So this process from the very beginning, you know, back in 2020, when we had the initial conversations about this pro, this property being basically turned over to us for a filing fee of $1,000, that was after, as has been mentioned earlier, a number of charrettes that were had, a number of different possibilities of uses for this property. Through all those meetings, there was discussion about developing the property. This was before we even redid the road up there and put the traffic light in there. We actually put it out to bid for a long amount of time, zero people came back. And one of the responses from one of those people who didn't bid said, if you gave me this property and charged me nothing, I would lose money. So as a developable property, this is a non-starter. No one wanted to develop it, it was not realistic. That is when we had the discussions about modified open space. That is what the state told us was the best thing to do. We did it, went through the process, they said, sorry, we can't convey it to you. And they came back to this fictitious number of $2 million as a value of the property, which I find fascinating because the poor Parsons property got $1 million. And that property doubled in value within three years. Best piece of property in the state evidently. But again, that's not the current leadership in the DOT right now. They have been very helpful, they've been trying to make up for the wrongs that we have seen throughout this. And right now, all we have been offered is this 15-year lease, which I tend to agree with Kathy, it's something. We'd actually have something on paper for this property where we would have control, albeit short-term. The historic society has a very difficult decision to make, which is why their best next step would be reaching out to all our legislatures, reaching out to, if it's the Greater Hartford Art Council, if it's reaching out to anyone who they think might have some pull and get us a longer commitment to this property, we would love that. If they came and said to us, we'll give you a 99-year lease, we, nothing would make us happier right now, other than the $1,000 they originally promised to, to us for. Anyway, other question? I have one last question. Can you explain the mindset of, on one hand, somebody has to pay the federal government back and then now there's a lease in front of us for no rental dollars? Who's paying that money back? So, because you can't have it both ways.
The answer is no, we could not even remotely begin to explain that mindset.
All right, let's follow suit with the rest of the negotiations.
My, my thing with this lease is, it's like, so we're, as a, as a group, if we were to put this forward, it doesn't mean that we're endorsing and saying this is an awesome deal that we're getting. We're just saying it's a deal and it's something we can do, continue to work on it. This is better than the alternative, which is purgatory.
Right, I, I would say it's, it's, this is our only deal, like, or the property basically stays the way it is. And, you know, and I think that it's somewhat better than that.
Yeah.
Kathy, is there a timeline for when we have to get back to them?
No, they've asked a couple of times to, and that's why it's on the agenda. I worry that because, again, in Jan, not, yeah, in January, we spoke and we were going to get this lease in like a month. And, you know, now we're in July, so.
No, it's July, you're right, sorry. It is, for sure it is.
So I, I just, I worry that it goes into these different groups and processes and different things. But I, again, I think that you don't have to do it now and it can come back again and we can try to negotiate more, but it's, you know, it's up to the group.
The, and one of the problems, as we've seen with any project, a great example is the Main Street Sidewalk Project. The state would ask us some questions, we'd respond, give them all the information, and it would take them months to get back to us with another question. So the fear is if we put this off or if we even ask them another question about it and say, well, let me toss this back, can you do longer? It's going to be six months that we hear about it. So that, that's the biggest fear. And what do we get for waiting? We have someone there who's speaking to us, at least supporting us in some way, not to take advantage of at least that amount of support. I don't see a huge upside to waiting right now. But we can certainly vote to wait if we so choose, so.
The, the only upside for me to wait or to think about waiting is mobilizing the troops, as it were, to kind of advocate for what this project should be, right? We, the, the whole idea behind it, if we're going to not be able to put the Phineas Lewis House there as we wanted to and then not have an easement or anything else and just have to keep on every five years, you know, extending the lease, I mean, that's in no one's interest. I, I get it, like, we want, we have something, but it's, it's so far from ideal. And if we could just wait for maybe five more minutes, quote unquote, and then just try and work the other end to see what else we can, we can get on there.
Yeah.
Here's one of the, first of all, the Phineas Lewis House would not be built on this site. It would be built likely on the adjoining site, which is owned by the Farmington Historic Society.
Right, I understand that, but originally weren't we?
And the access is what's in question. So the access would certainly not be ideal without this piece of property. There is nothing that says if we sign this and get something on paper, we cannot continue to negotiate because, again, this contract can be updated and amended at any point in time. So if we had something in paper, we'd be showing our commitment, the state would be showing some commitment. And then we could do exactly what you're saying, we could rally the troops, get people in saying, hey, can you have an extension on this? Can we sign an extension right now? Because you can sign an extension on a contract the day you sign the initial contract.
Exercise our first option and then ask for an amendment of the, the.
Or, I mean, the other thing, too, is that, I mean, we could, I mean, it's not like I go and tomorrow I could sign it or I could wait, you know, and see, have a meeting with you guys, the historic people could have a meeting and see how that meeting goes. And if it says, listen, there's some, it's positive, it looks like we can get an extension, then we'd wait to sign it and get the extension. If it doesn't look like that's happening, then I could, I could sign the lease.
So if we gave you the authority to sign the lease, but if there are any indications that it could be extended, then you come back to us?
Yeah, I, I figure that if, you know, again, we have an item here for not having an August council meeting, but I would say that if there hasn't been progress by September, I'd either come in September and tell you I've, that there is progress or that I'm going to, that we're signing the lease, something along those lines.
Hmm, just a couple of questions. First, I want to say, Kathy, thank you for everything that you've done for the last eight years to bring us to this point, and it is not on the town or the residents for where we are. It's on the DOT, no doubt. And I'm very glad to hear that we have an ally in the DOT doing what he can. But I have a couple of questions about, it sounded like, from what I heard from one of our presidents earlier, who said there was some incorrect information in this as to who the property owner was in the agreement.
Yeah, and if.
So there are some changes or adjustments, just tweaks that need to be made?
Yep, and if you see on the agenda item, I did write here that even though the thing, that the attorney, that there is some additional things that have to be looked at. And so, again, my whole thing was just to get this in front of the council as fast as I could so we didn't have to wait. Yeah, no, but there is definitely some things that still have to be looked at.
So my question is, since we're doing what we can for the town, at this point, we're trying to help the historic district, I would think, as much as, as quickly as we can because the state's waiting to hear from us. But should we take a look at this and see if there are anything adjustments? You said there were some things that we could do to, for, for access for the historic district to access this house because without that access, as, as they said, it's landlocked and we can't get to it.
Yeah, I mean, the way, if we have it, the problem is, is that if the state all of a sudden takes it back, then there's not access. And so there's access to it. I, and, and my overall opinion on this is that I'm okay with waiting, if that's what you want. I just, I caution everyone that it, this is, you know, it's such a, it's been such a convoluted process. And, you know, this, like, this lease is not a great lease, there's things in it. If we keep on going back and forth with the state and doing things, I think the term is something that if the historic district group can meet with the legislative people and say, we want to start with a 50-year lease and have it renewed, and that can be done, I think, you know, I got the impression from my gentleman that that wasn't going to be possible. But I, you know, I would encourage the historic group to try to negotiate. But all these other things, like minor things, can be adjusted, but I don't think we're in a very good negotiating position. They're not going to do much for us.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah, but, I mean, that's just my take on it.
I was just thinking that we might want to give ourselves some time to, you know, let the town hear a little bit more about it. And if we can make some changes or get some groups to make some calls, maybe that helps us, I don't know. And I hear your point of getting it done quickly because it doesn't sound like we have any other options. But shouldn't we go to the, let the town have its say before we make a choice for them without doing that? I don't know, that's my question.
Pause.
I, I sort of think we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. But I think if you're offered something on paper right now that we can sign to have actually to hold in hand, I think we take advantage of it because it does not stop us from negotiating and continuing to work on that set agreement to expand it. What if we take a week? She calls and the guy says, you know what, we're all set, have a good day. You had your chance to sign it, you didn't, talks are over. Now who looks like the fool? So.
A week in, in like the length of seven years to get one property? And honestly, what are they going to do with the 2.4 acres that's there currently?
I, I don't think they're too worried about it.
Right, so.
But they're, exactly, they're not, they're not looking to move it quickly. They're not looking to resolve issues, we've been playing this game for eight years with them. And so what, what, what's the harm for us to sign it?
Because once you've signed a contract, there's really no impetus on the conveyor, whomever it is, DOT to say.
They can get out of the contract in 30 days.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, but like, once that's done, it's like, okay, so you, you got what you wanted and that's it. There's no impetus for them to then say, oh, yeah, about that 50 years that you wanted, let's go back to the bargaining table at that point, in my opinion.
I agree with you, I don't think there's any impetus on them right now either. I think this is something that they're doing. I, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for them, but my perception of it is for them, this is sort of just, let's just make something happen with this now, they're trying to give us something sort of, sort of easy. That's my perception of the entire thing.
If that's the case, wouldn't they be willing to give us something that we might want? It might be a small thing, I don't know, but can we ask?
My only real world, you know, and I'm a business owner who has a lease and I've been landlocked by my lease. I don't want to move my restaurant someplace else. And I have signed many amendments to my lease to continue to get extensions on it. And that's what I would do, I would try to sign this because it's what we have. We don't know who's going to be in DOT in September, wherever, we have someone who's willing to work with us now. And then immediately look to petition for amendments so that we can get it. Because it doesn't sound like, the easiest thing would if they would give us an easement to the property in perpetuity, but it's not like they don't want to do that, they want to do this route, the land lease route.
I think part of it has to do with what Johnny, what you said, kind of what the process is. I think where, what process they're going through, which I'm not familiar with what the process is, is a pretty standardized process. And I think the gentleman doesn't want to make a lot of waves in that process. And this is what we usually do, this is what we have, let's get it through. That's the impression I've, I've gotten. And that's when he said, well, maybe I can go back for 10. But I don't think he wants to rock the boat in whatever process this is. And, but I don't know. And that's like I'm saying, for our liability or risk is a lot different from the historic district. And I'm fine either way, it's been going on this way for, for a long time. So if we want to wait and bring it back in September, we can do that if we not, but again.
Is this the, sorry, is this the, this the first set of terms that they sent us to? This is the first lease they sent us?
They sent it and we, yeah, and we talked to them.
And that was after some back and forth?
Yes.
Actually, one other question, didn't it say that they're, they're going to, we're going to be leasing from them, but we're the ones who have to ensure the property?
Yes, yeah.
That usually is.
Yeah, yeah.
Standard liability. I, also, one last comment, I'm, I'm very tossed up on which way I want to go with this. I, I don't see the risk of this property being sold out from under us. And that's really the bottom line risk. And I just don't see that happening, not at that price, not at that, not with the planning and zoning, especially if it was to ever get that far. The fact that there would be this kind of history to this project, I think would only add political pressure to the people that could have helped along the way. So I, I think the only near-term pressure we have is the person at the DOT and the willingness to help us through the process and get us here. And I, I guess I got to rely on your judgment because you're the one that's been dealing with them. We haven't, you know, I can't get a good feeling out of someone I've never met.
I mean, again, I think if, if we feel comfortable that we should wait, I think we should not wait any longer than September. If for some reason, when I talk to the DOT person and the DOT person says, I have to do this by this date, which he hasn't said, but if he did, we could call a special meeting and we could talk about it again. I mean, and we can do that. But, so, again, we've waited this long. I think that if the historic district should go and speak to them and see what their level is and if they can do better than what I can and get a longer standing lease and put more political pressure on them. And to be honest, I've, didn't go, I mean, we've been talking to them, but we've been round and round and round on this for so long, it's only, I can, we can only do so much. It's, I'm not, because it's, you know.
My last, and maybe this is a silly question, because we did hear from Portia in public comment. Have they, has anybody from historic district said, don't sign this lease?
No, but I don't think they, they definitely don't like it.
I can tell they don't like it.
They don't like the terms, all right?
Yeah, yeah, I can certainly tell they don't like it, but I just, I didn't know if anybody had said, you know, please hold off on our behalf or whatever.
Yeah, I will say, I think what the town has gone through and certainly what the historic district has gone through, we owe them the, the opportunity to let them try and move the needle a little bit. We owe them the opportunity for us to try and move the needle a little bit for them in terms of getting a longer lease. I know you can maybe ask again, but with them asking from another angle, maybe that helps us, I don't know. But I think we should take the time to try and make that needle move a little bit in our favor because it hasn't done that in eight years.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with giving the name of the gentleman and they can contact the legislative people and see what they can, what they can do.
Because we don't know until we try.
Right, no, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Well, I'll, I'll say, I don't agree with the theory that if we sign it, we have no leverage because that would be saying we have no confidence in our legislators to do any work whatsoever once we get a little something. And I think we do have some legislators who should try and get something done. It hasn't gotten us very far thus far, but I've always been hopeful maybe the next time. But if, if the consensus here is that we should table this, I even bring it back up in September, that's fine. I think, you know, we're talking about two months, hopefully, nothing drastic changes in DOT and we can still get at a minimal this. And if we can get a longer-term contract, fantastic, that's, that's a win for the town. I mean, the intent from the beginning was to get this property in all perpetuity. 15 years isn't quite that, so, any closer we can get to that, all the better. So if we would like to just table this motion, I think that would probably be your best bet.
For the town.
Okay, so all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Tabled.
Okay, we have tabled the item, N5. We're going to have to N6.
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing at 7:05 PM on September 12th, 2023 in the Town Hall Council Chambers to amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 148, property town-owned.
Second.
So this is just to set a public hearing, we'll have the public hearing in September. And at Chapter 148 is the chapter that regulates activities and behavior on town-owned property. Or, and I'm recommending that the ordinance be amended to prohibit the use of cannabis or cannabis-derived products and to prohibit the smoking of tobacco on any property owned or controlled by the town of Farmington. And the items are in red.
Yeah, so the change is in red.
Yeah.
If you all had a chance to take a look at this.
We'll have the public hearing at the meeting and we'll go through it in detail.
What's a carrying cigarette?
All right, so this is to set the public hearing, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Can I just ask one really quick question?
That's when I say, does anyone have any comments?
I know, but I just, just really, it just, I just noticed it. O says carrying cigarette, what's a carrying cigarette? Is that a new thing?
A what cigarette?
Carrying, on a O?
Maybe one of those old-timey fancy ones with the.
Where, can you show me where you are?
Uh, sure, I'm on, like, the third, yeah, in the red, you have N and O.
Or, I think that should probably be carrying.
Carrying, I'll check that, I'll check that.
I thought maybe it was like a new thing.
That could be a typo, let me check it.
Gummy cigarettes are not good either.
Yeah, I just noticed it, my little eye spied.
Good catch. Okay, now we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passing unanimously.